Okay. All right. Thanks so much for coming out on this rainy night. We'll start our meeting at 6:01. I guess we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Great. Okay. I think we're going to get started tonight by taking a look at the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
All right. We'll review them. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or changes to the minutes of November?
They looked good to me.
Yeah, I thought they looked good, too. All right. Thanks so much. Then I guess we'll...
Just going to take a vote on them.
Yeah, we'll vote to approve. All approving?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's right. We only have two more. Anybody opposed? Any objections? So, 4:00. Tanya not here. All right. So, the big, we're going to the FAC?
Do a public comment if you want.
Yeah. Should we start that? Do you mind, Eric? I think we'll start. We'll start with 15 minutes and then we'll save some for towards the end, too, just so if people end up coming at the end. So, we'll start that. As everybody knows, public comment, three-minute increments. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself. All right. So, very important meeting tonight as we talk about the budget of SMS. I think I just wanted to do two things before we started that. You know, first of all, I just wanted to say, obviously, the budget of SMS is very important, right, to this town, to taxpayers. Obviously, we're all feeling a little bit of the hit. Stratum has been going through a reappraisal and that's affecting all of us differently, but definitely affecting us. And at the same time, I just want to say a thank you to Kate and to Kate for doing this budget. I know it is not easy for, you know, those of us that do budgets for our jobs. It's a job in itself and so I just wanted to say thank you. And obviously, SMS is so important to this town and so important to us. And so, I'm looking forward to having a great conversation today. Before we get started, I just wanted everybody to go around and just introduce themselves. And I would just love to know, I think, just the FAC. If you guys could just talk a little bit, just 30 seconds, 30 seconds. Just say, you know, why you're interested in being on the FAC and maybe connections that you might have to SMS, just so we can kind of place everybody tonight.
All right. My name's Mike Houghton. I've lived in Stratum for 20 years. I am a member, have been the Chair of the Select Board in Stratum for the last nine years, member of the Planning Board for 15 years, and a member of the Heritage Commission for eight years. My son is a resident in town. I have two granddaughters. One is enrolled in the school. The other will be here shortly. And it's a great town. It's a good school and excited to be here.
Have you ever served on the FAC before?
No.
Oh, that's great. Well, thank you. Welcome.
I've been through a lot of budgets.
Yeah, I was happy to have your expertise tonight. Thanks for coming.
Hi, Pat Abrami.
Yeah?
Lived in town 43 years. My son was the first second grade that came when the school opened.
Okay.
And my daughter followed that two years later. Was a state rep for 12 years, representing Stratum. I was on Ways and Means Committee, so I've gone through a lot of budgets at the state level. Especially on the revenue side. I hope we could talk a little bit of revenues, revenues at the end. I know most of it, we have costs in front of us. We need to talk about revenues as well. What else? I was involved last year, our last budget, as you know. There was a lot of pushback on the budget that was presented. I went through with a fine-tooth comb last year's budget. I was going to do the same thing and then Dave Emanuel called me and said, "You want to do it?" And I said, "Yeah, I'm probably going to do this anyway." So, here I am. And I look forward to working with you on this. You know, we all support the school, but we all have to be concerned about the taxpayers as well. The Real Balancing Act and like the Chair has mentioned, it has been a... The increases in the taxes were not evenly distributed across everybody in this town. Those who had a lot of land got a bigger hit than those with less land because that wound up at a higher rate than the properties themselves. So, we just have to be sensitive to that and try to be, hopefully, all be creative in ways that we can fine-tune this budget.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Peck. I have been a New Hampshire resident for most of my whole life. I'm an Army brat, so I was not born here, but my parents moved to New Hampshire when I started school. I'm originally from Hampton and stayed in New England for college and then came back after 10 years of working. Once my husband and I started having children, we're both New Hampshire residents, we wanted to come back and move back to New Hampshire. I have a fifth grader and a third grader at SMS. We've been here since preschool. We love the school and I come from a family of public school teachers and so I know how important a public school is to a community and that's why I want to be involved in this committee.
That's great. Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
You're welcome. I'm Heidi Hansen. I think I'm probably the veteran FAC member here. I've been, I think, when I calculated, I think I've been doing this for 10 years now. If I go back to the first time that I sat and looked at one of these school budgets, I had both my kids go through Stratum Memorial School and through the middle school and I have a senior right now at Exeter High School and I also had my kids spend some time at the private school. So, we've seen it all, done it all, but yeah, happy to be here and happy to be part of the process.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And I think that sense of history is so...
Yeah.
Definitely appreciate your time here.
Jennifer, just as a heads up, so I talked to Dave...
Is this public comment?
No.
Oh. Do you want to come and use the microphone because we're recording?
I was sitting over here, I'm Cameron Orr, but I talked to Dave Emanuel earlier this week about being part of the committee.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you need something. I was talking with Heidi about it.
Oh, okay.
Dave, so I don't...
Do we need a fifth member?
I did not get anything from David.
Yeah.
I got Kathleen's name on Monday, but I did not get anything since that. I can check in with him after this meeting.
Okay.
But I did not get an official appointment from David.
But yeah, it would be great if you wanted to stay and listen and then we will be meeting again next week.
And just a point of clarification on that. I think Cameron had planned to be appointed, but then he wasn't sure if he could be here tonight, so he was a little concerned about that.
Got it.
And I had encouraged him to go forward with that.
Okay.
And I think there just may have been some cross messages with Dave, so we can maybe work with Dave and get that finalized. So, he's an official member of the FAC.
Yeah. Okay. That sounds great. Thanks. Yeah, we can reach out to Dave. Okay. So, I think tonight, you know, this is a very important meeting. We want to look at the budget. I think we want to try to keep comments sort of concise and short and on topic of what we're talking about. So, I will occasionally maybe be interrupting or directing, but we definitely want to hear all the voices. So, I'm not going to put you on the spot. Is Kate going to talk or is there someone who could maybe talk at a high level? And my kids are in the hall. I'm going to go chuck on them, but I'll be right back.
I think, can everybody hear me?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. Is there an FM system anywhere?
Yeah.
I'll turn the mic on. We're just looking for an FM system, so pick me up if there is.
Hey, Kate, maybe bring the microphone really close so you don't have to strain your voice.
Yeah, I know. I think, is that helping at all?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I think that I appreciate the cover page that Molly has put together because I feel like it is that sort of high-level area in which you would see either an increase or a decrease that would be, that has some importance. She also organizes it by function code, which I think is also really helpful because it sort of categorizes the items within the budget that are similar and are attributed to the same function for auditing purposes and for building a budget within the state. I think you'll notice that, and I think, secondly, if you turn to the second page, there's a pie chart that sort of, I would say, takes what you're seeing on the front page and really tries to show you the things that the school board has control over that are not already contractual. So, sort of the things where they can make decisions that would impact your budget in a way that isn't already contracted, like oil, gas prices, electricity, teachers' contracts, things like that are contractual and they're really not flexible, or they are a little bit, but not really. And then we try to work within the, I think it's about 6% of things that we can actually sort of finagle as a board and as a staff.
Thank you so much. Kate, anything else you wanted to add? No. Yeah. Okay.
I concur.
All right. Thanks so much. Molly, anything you wanted to add?
Kate did a good job explaining it. So, all of the salaries are in here. We have two collective bargaining agreements here at Stratum. We have a parent union and a teacher union. So, this is not a negotiation year for either one, which means they have an active CBA or collective bargaining agreement. So, everybody has been stepped and tracked per the CBA. Anybody that's in a non-union position was put in at a 3% raise. And Kate did a good job with the pie chart, seeing what kind of our fixed versus variable costs in the budget. And at the bottom, we did briefly talk about potential removing of furnitures and fixtures. I did not embed that in the actual line-by-line. That's why I put it in the bottom, because it was a discussion point, but I don't think it was actually requested to move. I believe it was just a discussion point, so that's why I put it in the bottom box there for you. But otherwise, we worked closely with the Building Administration. I start looking at the budget in August, looking at how staffing has changed from the prior year, and then start meeting with Principal Lucas and then eventually meet, and also the special ed team. And then we eventually rope in Dr. Andruski and have several, several rounds of reviews. This budget has gone through numerous rounds. And then we have a first blush with the board in November and take any feedback and come back in the December meeting typically, which happens next week. And then we are here to gain your input tonight.
Thank you so much. So, I'd love to start with the FAC. Is there some questions?
I got plenty, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to hear wide range of voices, but we'll start.
Can we start with what we're anticipating as, and I've got a sheet because I was in contact with Chris and he sent me numbers about what we're anticipating as the number of enrollments by grade. So, I just want to make sure this is, we're all on the same page about what the enrollments are going to be as this round.
So, Pat?
What I did, I did a little cutting and pasting on the, oh, I did a little... I'll give him one. I'll give him one.
It's not really a microphone for application, it's just for the online people.
Right. So, I mean, as you can see, when you get this, I mean, the enrollments have declined from the school year nine and 10. They were up, they were like 6, not 37. And I guess per Chris, this current year that we're in, we're at 498. Now, I worked backwards. Chris, you didn't give me, you didn't give me the kindergarten, so I worked backwards to get to the 75 in your email to me. So, we had, I had all the others, so what I needed verification is that, is that true? Is it 75 currently in kindergarten or not? But, because you gave me a total number of 498, right? And then, and then you basically said, "Take that number," and you said that we should shoot for 503 for the budget year that we're working on and move everybody up one grade. And that's basically what I did. Obviously, pre, I didn't know, but I worked backwards from the 503 and it worked out to be 20, just like this year's. So, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. And then when you, in the bottom, then I penciled in what that meant pupils per class, assuming the same 5, 5, 5, 5, 5 for each of the grades, except for two preschools. So, you can see the pupils to class ratios are currently, the first line there on the bottom. And then that's for 24, 25 this year and then for 25, 26, the budget we're talking about. So, they're in the 16 to 17 or one would be 15, 15 to 1 ratio. So, but I just want to make sure that we all agree that that's what we're looking at.
So, there was, in the email that you had, you had mentioned that you were missing a grade, so I gave you the correct for this year and then I just used that for next year using estimates. So, I actually have the actuals versus your close, but you had first in kindergarten inaccurate, so like kindergarten right now is 81.
Right.
And first grade is 75, so when you projected, you had it inaccurately because the email wasn't accurate, Pat. So, I have an actuals I can hand out to you guys. It would be the correct version of it.
Okay. Good. That's why I asked.
That's why I provided it.
Do you remember, Kate? I missed that email. If you email me that.
No, I just gave it to you right now.
Okay, good. Good, good. All right. So, that, so this will be the number we're working from. Okay. The other thing, I'll start with, and I'll let her speak. I actually went through this with a fine-tooth comb, the budget, and I was trying to make sure the numbers added up. When you go to page two, when you look at student body activities, okay, I guess it's a matter of, there's only two, two with that code, 1210. Am I looking at that correctly, page two?
So, anything in the 1200 section is going to be special education, not student body activities? Oh, you're talking about 14?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. I'm looking backwards, right, to the page. It's, right. It's...
Pat, if you're looking for student body activities, it's on the bottom of page two. It's the very last line.
1410. If you go back, keep going.
There's co-curricular salaries and student body activities.
I was in the right spot.
Page two. Yeah, so you're on page four. So, if you keep going, keep going. One more. And then down at the bottom, this is what you're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
No, there was one with social workers that, yeah, right. It's on the top of page, oh, page three, top of page three.
Okay.
So, so page three, the second two lines are guidance, right? But when you add those numbers together, it looks like we added...
Do you want to...
Let me, I'll work on this, I'll work on this.
We'll come back to you?
Yeah. I have one other one, though.
Okay.
See if I get this one right. When it comes to computer services and school district operations, which is, has to do with the district, district office salaries, correct, is, should be in, should be in school district operations. But I, doing the math, it sounds, it looks like it wound up in computer service, computer software, computer services. You may want to check it. It looks like that number was picked up incorrectly, 5,200 bucks. If you do the math, you'll see it's...
You mean on the summary sheet?
On the summary sheet.
Okay, I can double-check it.
Yep. All right.
I had a question for you, Pat. You have a son, right? Who came through Stratum?
Yeah, and a daughter.
And a daughter. Do you know what their class sizes were when they came through the school?
When they were here, the census here was 700.
The school itself was 700?
It was 700 students. We had sixth grade here as well.
Okay.
So, you know, it's funny, I was going to, I was actually going to call them and ask them, did they remember how large their classes were?
But, yeah, so how large the classroom sizes were?
That's what I'm getting at. Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Well, we don't have sixth grade here now, so the numbers are probably going to be a little different. Because it's only through fifth.
No, but the same building, though. So, the assumption is that we had more, more students per class than, with 700 students plus, including sixth grade. I mean, how do we fit a whole sixth grade in here? And that included years where there was preschool as well, which takes up some space. So, but I wasn't even going to go there with that discussion, but my assumption is that the class sizes were bigger. And then if you, if you...
So, do you think that's a good thing or a bad?
No, well, the sweet spot, you know, the question becomes where the sweet spot is in terms of, of school class size. And, and, you know, we're at 15, 16, 17 right now.
Which is the average. Yeah, so I would suggest maybe you kind of look at the average classroom size around New Hampshire and that's probably how the teachers make the class assignments.
I think tonight, I'm just going to interrupt, just, let's focus on really budget, questions we have about the budget. You know, obviously, there are policy issues and things like that, which are maybe more board issues, but I would love to hear some other questions you guys have about the board, about the budget.
So, could someone explain how the teacher salaries were? I understand, you know, there's contractual increases every year, but there are also steps. I used to call them steps in the old days.
Yep.
It still is. So, so contract only does, it basically moves, moves the, it moves the range up, correct?
Yep.
Right? So, and then, and how many steps are there?
13.
13.
13 steps?
Yeah. And then there's additional, like a stipend for additional certification, like a...
National Board Certified.
National Board Certified teacher would get a stipend. We don't have a CAG stipend, but longevity is also included in there. But you can get up to like a master's plus 30 at step 13. So, you can be step 13 bachelor's or you can be step 13 master's plus 30 or anywhere in between. So, step 13 is different depending on your education.
Right.
And all the collective bargaining agreements are published on the SAU website and at the end of every CBA, there is salary schedules that show all of that information.
Well, I asked Molly for the salaries of everybody. And the way they're, the way they're listed is they're, they're listed as the, it looks like the base salary and then something called longevity.
Yep.
So, is longevity the steps?
No, longevity is the, after 10 years of being here.
So, so after a certain period of being an employee here, you can earn what's called longevity. So, it's in the collective bargaining agreement as to what the longevity stipend is. So, teachers or staff that have been here for, is it 12 years?
Well...
Earn what's called longevity on top of the base salary.
Right.
And so, that report that I provided you is by account code. So, it's, you'll see the account code first and then everybody's name and the salary and possibly longevity if they have it underneath each account code. That's how that report's organized.
So, what you gave me is, is the salary projected for them for next year?
Correct.
Which includes the step that they're in?
So, everyone...
And as well as the increase in the range for that year, correct?
Correct. It would be anybody that's stepping and tracking per the salary grid.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And Pat, just to be clear, so I ran that based off of a 501 account. So, in your, in your PAC, you're going to see there's a long string of numbers, numbers that begin with 11. That is your general fund. 14, I think it is, is your food service fund. And then the second code is a four-digit code and that's your function. So, that would designate regular ed, special ed, transportation, facilities, maintenance. And then after that is a five-digit code that always starts with a 5-0. 5-0 signifies expense. And where you see 5-0-1, that signifies salary. So, a 5-0-2, 3, 4, 5, that is a non-salary item. So, the report I ran you, Pat, was based off of everything that was a designated 501 account, meaning a salary account line.
Right. Thank you. Molly, is there a key, what you just described, is there a key that tells us or reminds us, "Oh, this is what this means"?
Well, there's a state handbook, but I could also do a download out of the system.
Yeah, I mean, I, the numbers don't, the numbers don't mean anything to me. I'd just like to have a little cheat sheet that says what you just said. That's all, if that's possible.
I don't have it readily available, but I could...
No, no, not now. Yeah, that's all, yeah. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
So, Molly, when you do the, when you do this, when you added up all the, let's just regular teacher, regular teacher salaries, for instance, you took all the base plus the increases and then the longevity is in that number as well, correct? They're all in that number.
So, everything on your report, so that would be the longevity projected for next year was on the report that you have.
But when I look at the, when I look at the page one, first, first line item, it says regular instructor, teachers' salaries, and I see a budgeted $3,798,000 in change. That's all-inclusive of everything, longevity and everything in there. Okay.
That is everything on that line item.
Yep. Thank you. All right.
What are the questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the, I don't know if people can hear me, but I'm just attempting to talk into the microphone here. I know last year, there was a line item for a police detail and I think that's on page five under contracted services. And last year, in an effort to remove some things from the budget, you guys really went through and just like slashed, slashed a bunch of things from the budget. And one of the things was that you went from, I think, a four-hour detail three times a week, which would have been $43,000, and you reduced that to a four-hour detail two times a week. And it looks like that's what you're asking for this year as well. I wonder if, can you speak to maybe what kind of services are being provided for that dollar amount during that police detail?
I can, I can speak to that a little bit. We actually just, I met with Chief King, I don't know, maybe six weeks ago now and just had a follow-up. The police department had been short on staff. They're filling positions currently. And so, it had been a bit harder to sort of line that up because we wanted to be really clear about what we were hoping that person would do when they were here. Part of that, I think, is wanting to ensure that it's, that really what we're asking for is them to just be on school grounds, not even in the building right now. Because of the consistency with kids and the interface with kids, we would want to ensure that that person was trained to do that. And right now, the person that they have trained is spending a good deal of the time at CMS and they're waiting for other people to finish some training. So, right now, it will be, and we're just getting it lined up because they're just feeling that they have the staff. It'll be one time a week for four-hour detail randomly throughout, like just so that it feels like someone would not know when someone was going to be here, so they would plan that there would always be someone here.
Okay. So, right now, I think what I heard you say, "One time a week," is because of the shortage with staffing, but next year, you're hoping to get two times a week.
I think it's, I would say that we're going to see how it goes with the hope of it making, working out more, especially as they get more staff.
Okay.
My chair, I have a global question.
Yeah.
So, if we look at the whole budget...
Let me just let Mike go, just to hear...
Oh, I didn't realize you had a second. Oh, I didn't realize, here, stand up, I'm sorry, hold on, Molly.
Let me have it.
Yep, yeah.
So I don't, I don't necessarily have a line item speech to make here, but I would just start by just making some observations. First, first compliments to the staff for the amazing job you did with putting all this information together, that's a lot of data, and I appreciate your efforts in doing that. And, you know, like, like many of us, we all have hard jobs, you have a really hard job. There, there, as I look at this and reflect on your budget, I mean, eighty percent of it is people, right? Eighty percent of it is people?
Oh, yeah.
Right? So, and then the other twenty percent is all the other stuff. So when you look, you know, when you look at the environment that we're in, being sympathetic to that, that environment, I mean, my, my sort of observation would be that we're above the level that we should, we should be at, and should be targeting something less than that, and, and you're much more abundantly qualified to find those areas than those of us like me that don't understand your environment. But I would, I would look at it from the vantage point that love to see four hundred thousand dollars come out of here, to get to a level that I think is more, you know, more sympathetic and with the community, and, and provides needs with our, our students, and, you know, and I'm not sure what's happened in years past with respect to the relationship between student enrollment and staff size, and how many children are in a class, I heard that conversation come up. I'm not the one that's qualified to say whether it's this, that, or the other thing, but, but the student enrollment is going down, and, and it would, it would appear to me that there might be some room in class sizes to rethink how we do the things that we do, and, and maybe, maybe discover a method to move forward that alleviates some of the cost that's associated with the operation of the school on a day-to-day basis. With, with twenty percent of the staff taken up by eighty percent of the line items on the budget, there's not any one line item outside of people that you can cut enough to, to make an impact that I feel you really all would want to make, in terms of, in terms of the challenge that lays before our community in terms of the things that they're dealing with. So, that's where I would start. If you asked me to come to the next meeting with the identification of a bunch of line items, I can do that, but, but I thought I'd offer some observations to start with.
Let me just ask you about that four hundred thousand, is that, is that a percentage that you're kind of shooting for, that you think's palatable?
I, I think that's, yes.
And so what would the person, well...
I mean, I think you, I think if you were somewhere in the two percent range, is probably, is probably where, where I would be looking at things, and, and, you know, I guess, you know, from my involvement in the town, from my involvement in, I, I own and operate a business, I look at the economic environment, the realities that people are confronting in front of them, and, and the stressors that that creates. Just being sympathetic to that, and, and trying to look at ways in which we can balance that for the community and the school, in a constructive way. As I said at the outset, you, you have huge challenges, because eighty percent of your cost is people, and, you know, we all feel very much, you know, engaged and, and connected to our people, so, so, you know, that, that calls for perhaps a level of more radical change than is typically felt in operating environments.
Yeah. So Molly, from what I understand, this pie chart, all other, that is the disposable?
So the way I put it together was contractual can mean a lot of different things to people, because salary is salary, but you also have flexibility on the number of people you employ. So what I did is I broke it down into different sections, so there's a salary, and then there's health, dental, disability, and life insurances, FICA and retirement, so anybody that works over a certain threshold has to be in New Hampshire retirement, so we have to pay what's called NHRS, which is the New Hampshire retirement system, and then the FICA is just your federal tax. Transportation, we have a contract with First Student, and we also have special education, and you legally have to transport children to school. You have the SAU assessment, which is the portion that STRATAM would pay towards the central office, which is decided by the joint board, and that has already been decided for next year. And the maintenance, you have to keep the lights on, you have to keep the heat on in the building, and so this is everything that's in the maintenance section. And then food service, and I noted it was non-salary, because the food service salary portion is up in the salary section. You legally have to serve kids a meal for it to count as a school day, and so these are items that have to happen. Now, the level of salary is, is flexible, but, but you have to pay people per the step and track on the salary schedule, and so everything else in the budget is in the all other, so your pens, your papers, and your computers, your Chromebooks, that's in the all other, outside of those items that I mentioned.
Okay.
I have a question, please. On, on page one, the very first line item is regular instructor teacher salaries, and then the second to last line on that same page is teacher salaries, what's the difference?
No, yeah, so the eleven hundred is regular ed. What starts with the twelve hundred, it's usually twelve-ten?
Yeah.
Is special ed.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, Molly, would you say that when you add the salaries and the benefits, including FICA and retirement, is that around fifty percent of salary?
Is FICA and retirement fifty percent of salary?
No, no, you take all of your insurance, health insurance, dental, disability, life, FICA and, and retirement, add them together, is that fifty percent of salary? It was last time. It's about fifty percent of salaries.
Pat, I just did the napkin math, it's like forty-eight percent, so...
Forty-eight.
It's very close. Now, that might be different on a graduated basis, depending on who we're talking about, but if you just take the salary number and you combine the other two, it's forty-eight percent. So your all-in is like forty-eight percent overhead.
So, you know, and that's typical for, I'm sorry, I researched this last time, that's typical for public environment, I don't know, I don't know, do you know what, what the town, towns, off your head? So... For benefits over, over salaries?
So, it's probably, it's probably close to that.
Yeah. Okay. So...
But I, I think the, I think the, so it's fine to look at salaries, but...
You can't do anything about it now.
But you provide them benefits too, so, so it's really people cost, and what are the people costs? And the people costs are about eighty percent of your budget. So, so that's, you know, that's undeniable, that's, that's where your costs are, and, and, you know, and then eighty percent of the line items are probably the other twenty percent.
I understand.
If you go through all the, all the line items on the budget, so, you know, so...
Well, here's my, here's my only comment on, on that, and I, I think I've mentioned it here before, years ago, I would come to these meetings, and I noticed something that when you, when someone leaves and you replace, you replace the person, you bring in someone not at the lower end of the scale, you'll bring them in somewhere closer to the midpoint. See, so when I, when I look at these salaries, I'm not gonna see a normal distribution of salaries. If I compare it to the range, I'm sure it's gonna be skewed to the higher side. So the, the only way that we can start tackling of reducing these salaries is to start changing that, that strategy. I remember bringing that up the year that a lot of, a lot of the teachers that taught my kids were retiring, and I said, you know something, those teachers were young pups when they were, they were here, they, they were out of school, okay? Young, eager, energetic. So, I don't know, it's just an observation, there's nothing we can do about it for this budget, you understand that? I mean, that's something for the board to consider going forward. If we, if we, if going, because this is not gonna get any easier going year to year, and I, I think, I think we gotta look at that, that's one way, that's one area when it comes to salaries, that we might be able to, to start getting a more normal curve in terms of the salaries, you know, with lower, lower salary people here, high here, and then, and then you have all these step functions, right? You have all these steps, I mean, the, the teachers, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna gain every year, you should be keeping happy with the steps. But, unless you come back and say to me, well, and I, I know what the salaries, I did go and I did get the salaries of all, every school and average salaries from two years ago, that's the latest one I had, I haven't handed, I'm not even gonna bother handing it out, but, I will if you want me to, but the STRATAM for elementary schools, this was two years ago, was the highest average salary of any of the schools. And where did the data come from? The data came from the Department of Education. Now, whether people have filled out the surveys that they sent properly, I don't know, this is my data. You know, it was, the top one was, was, was the co-op, that was the top, eighty, eighty-six thousand was the average then, and then, and I have a, I have a graph, I could show you the graph of, of what it is.
So, I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page as you, are you saying that the school should not try to hire experienced teachers? Now, I'm, I'm in healthcare, so I, I don't work in a school, I don't understand it in the same way, but I know in healthcare, it's probably similar, that you want a good mix of people newer to the profession, people kind of in the middle, and experienced people, so I don't think I would, I don't know if I would suggest that we should not hire people with experience and just new graduates, because that seems a little, that would seem a little bit hard, um, hard for those teachers to accommodate.
Well, it depends on the, it depends on the grade, it depends on the, the level of experience you have in place, right now, you have all experienced people.
Well, no, we have some, we have some newer people, my, my third, my son's third grade teacher only has a couple of years of experience, and she is right next to an experienced, a very experienced teacher, Mr. Saltis, and I'm assuming that was done for mentorship to help her as she transitioned. And again, this is, I'm not talking about the same school district, but my sister-in-law is a public school teacher in Washington DC, and she is the most experienced teacher, and all she has are new graduates in that school, and it's, it's very difficult for the school.
Well, the most experienced teacher doesn't mean that they're the best teacher, let's, let's say that too.
Yeah, I, I hear you, I just wanna focus on sort of the budget.
But this is the budget.
Okay.
I mean, and, by the way, I, I didn't make this up, I heard this said here over the years, that it's great that they're hiring some younger teachers, that, that's, I think that's good, it brings new blood into the, the organization, that's, that's... So, I, I'm just, I'm saying for the future, because there's really not much we can do, because the teachers have, you know, they, they have, they have a union contract, collective bargaining contract, I should say, and, and there's nothing we can do until the next, next cycle. So, so it is what it is, the salaries are gonna be what it is. The only thing is if, if there's, if we're projecting, I think three people may leave next year, I don't know if they're gonna be teachers or not, what's the strategy to hire the new ones? There's, there's an opportunity to, to save some, you know, budget dollars by carefully, you know, looking at what we got for a distribution of salaries and experience, to say maybe we should bring a few more younger ones. I'm trying to be creative here, I'm not trying to, you know, every organization has new people right out of school.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't hire new teachers, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the same page as you.
Right.
But as a, as a parent, that was one of the reasons why we moved to STRATAM was because of the reputation of having a very experienced school district.
Guess what, forty-three years ago, that's where we moved to STRATAM too.
Yeah, so we're...
And when I, when I talk to people out there, and I talked to a lot of people who run for office so many times, that's the reason they moved here too, so I understand that. But, we'll get into another conversation about something else later on, but I'm just saying, I, I, now I have the salaries of all the teachers, I'll do a little graph for the next meeting to show where we're at, and maybe I'll, maybe I'll disprove my own self. Again, I was just reciting what I thought I heard here, because I didn't have the data in front of me, I didn't have the actual salaries, now I do, for each teacher, and we can say, okay, what's that distribution of salaries look like compared to the, compared to the ranges that we have? Again, it's nothing we can do with it now, but it's a discussion for the board for the future, to see if we wanna change a strategy to try to help out in future budgets, because it, right now, if, if we're, if we're replacing somebody with a lot of experience, with somebody with a lot of experience, we're, we're gonna be marching backwards in terms of trying to, it's gonna be harder and harder to, to balance a budget, harder and harder to keep, keep tax rates down, that's all I'm trying to say.
Okay. All right.
Jen, I think the only other comment that I would make, we, we could individually just throw out our opinions here, that would be no different than if we were just sitting in the audience, sort of offering up our opinions about the budget. Process-wise, what we've done in the past, and just, I, I don't wanna dictate how we do this, because there are no really rules around how the fact should, should be here making recommendations, but I would say, I think if we want to come up with a collective recommendation to the board, let's do that, or we can just throw out individual recommendations, and, and if I'm going to do that tonight here, I would say, I would be concerned about just making an arbitrary cut of, say, four hundred thousand dollars without, without understanding what that might do to the teacher-student ratios, so, yeah, I, I would just like to be careful about approaching that in a way that might not be in the best interest of student learning in the classroom.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. I think in years past too, haven't you guys kind of gone off and...
Exactly, yes, yes.
Okay.
Which, which allows us to sort of, we don't always agree on everything, to come up with sort of a compromised recommendation about how can we maybe reduce this just a little bit?
Okay.
From what's being proposed. Right, yeah, exactly.
How does everybody on the fact feel about that? If you guys were to excuse yourself or...
Everyone, hey, I'm new here.
Yeah.
But let's do this, though, but I have little bullets next to some of these line items, so I understand, we all have to understand why something went up. For instance, we're on page one, professional services for curriculum development. It, it used to be zero, now it was eleven thousand this year, now it's going to twenty-one thousand. Can we, I've, again, I just have to understand why.
Yeah, that's a great question, Pat, I think, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, please?
There's been a ton of research that supports, I'm sure you're familiar with the science of reading, like a major body of research that's been having a significant impact on how we teach reading within our schools, and in order to ensure that our teachers are getting access to professional development and new curriculums that support the new research, we have to bring in consultants, or we have to, we have trainers that come with programs that we use, and that money supports that level of curriculum development within our school as we adopt programs and new testing materials, and the state came out with new laws regarding dyslexia and things like that, we have to provide professional services for our staff in order to keep up to current trends.
Okay, that one up, that one up ten thousand from eleven thousand. I'm just trying to find the big item on, say ones. Oh, the other thing is, I meant to ask earlier, in this whole budget, whether it's, you know, regular education, special education, and all the other sub-accounts that have FTEs in it, people in it? Are there any new people, any new positions added in this budget, and any taken out? So there's nobody new, and nobody's been taken out? Okay, just wanna understand that.
Correct.
So, when we see salaries going up... So, when we see salaries going up or going down, that's, that's existing people or replacements thereof.
Great, yeah.
Maybe a follow-up to that, are you aware of any retirements that might be coming from teachers?
Hmm, good question.
So, the, uh, in the CBA for the teachers, January fifteenth is the expected date to tell us if they're going to retire.
Okay.
So unfortunately, it's an unknown at this point.
Okay.
We do know we have, uh, this current year, we've had two ESPs retire. One's last day is actually Friday, and another is in February, but that's the only known retirements at this time.
And, I'm sorry, what were those positions?
ESPs, paraprofessionals.
Oh, sorry. Those will be replaced for us.
Yeah.
So, so.
Um, before moving forward, I'm just gonna, we already did fifteen minutes of public comment. I'm gonna start our timer for fifteen more minutes of public comment. If anybody, does anybody have anything?
Yep. So, uh, hi, I'm Cameron Orr. I live in Shannon Drive, and I have, uh, two kids attending here, and my son, um, just moved to CMS this year. Um, and I attended quite a few of these board meetings. I think you guys met me before. I was looking to get appointed to the board. And something I keep hearing tonight, and I've heard at all the meetings I attend, is the primary focus seems to be on this tax issue, which I completely understand. But I hear a lot of sympathy to the taxpayers and the people in the town, and I totally understand that. I live in the town, I pay taxes in the town, I understand. But I also moved here from a town that had a failing school system. So, that town did not attract any people. I moved out specifically because I didn't want my children attending there. So, I'm concerned, I was trying to look on the, the board website, and I don't know what the mandate of the school board is, and I understand there's a responsibility to the taxpayers, but I would assume that there's also a mandate, there's responsibility to the excellence of education in our town, right? And to the point that, you know, I keep hearing, we're gonna save money by, you know, hiring less experienced teachers or whatever. So, I, I work at the nuclear plant, right? And we have this, uh, excellence model, right, where we just, we develop policies for excellence and what we can do to have excellent performance. So, I think trying to determine the lowest common denominator in a school system, which is highly ranked, and people move here, which, I mean, everyone who lives here knows, the price, like, average house prices in here are six, seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. There was a new development built behind me, full of houses, eight hundred thousand dollars. Those people are paying the property taxes to the town. They moved here so that their children can attend the school here. That's why I moved here. So, uh, you know, I, I heard we wanna have creative solutions, and I would rather hear, I, I don't think creative solutions are eliminating teachers or hiring less experienced teachers, and I don't think there's a problem with having a balance of new teachers and, you know, getting people up to speed. But I looked through the budget numbers, and I saw eighty-five thousand dollars for fuel, oil, and gas, right? So, we had the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services here earlier this year about the well, right? And I don't know if any of them are involved. Maybe we could ask them about energy efficiency things.
Right.
Like, I know the school is going through the process of evaluating the building. So, I'd really like to see creative solutions that don't involve reducing the staff, and also the teachers are subject to inflation. So, I keep hearing, like, yeah, the tax, like, my taxes went up a significant amount. The people that work here are, some of them are people that live in our town.
Yeah.
And they have the same concerns. So, I think we need to have a little bit of balance on the side of, yes, the taxpayers need to have some savings, but the people here are also taxpayers, and they're also the teachers of our children, right? Um, so, yeah, I, you know, I heard the, the hackles kind of come up on this four hundred thousand dollars off the top. That's alarming, because, you know, I, I think there's.
I appreciate what you're saying, probably another minute or so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, no problem. But, so, I also looked at the police detail, because I had that question last year, and I guess, I don't know, you know, I know this isn't a question and answer, but this is more like maybe a follow-up. If the town pays for the police department, why does the school district, which is taxed separately, also have to pay for the police detail? I don't understand that. Because to me, if we're looking at cuts, I would much rather eliminate things like that than teacher salaries or hiring less expensive teachers, whatever. So, I, I'll wrap it up, but I just wanna say that I think the tax savings folks so far are overrepresented at these meetings, because it's difficult for parents to attend. And I know you guys, several of you I know are parents, actually, I think most except for, well, I don't know. I, I've seen you guys around. Um, but I think that we need to take into account that, you know, the savings that we're looking for, we need to be creative in a way that doesn't impact the school. So, I'll, I'll be done. Thank you.
Jen, Jen, could I make a comment? Because he's on the nuclear, he's, he works in nuclear?
Sure.
Because of, of what you do. Um, and I'm on the building, uh, subcommittee, I chair the subcommittee. The new boilers are more energy efficient that we're looking at. We're going to gas versus oil. We're looking at a new roof to double the insulation. The lights will all be LED from incandescent. Um, the, there'll be insulation installed in the soffits. There are a number of things that we're doing in the renovation of the school to improve energy efficiency, and you're, that's your line of work, so.
And I appreciate that. I just think we should also have the folks understand the projected savings on that when we're talking about it, right? I know this is gonna back and forth, but I do appreciate you.
Yeah. I think, also, I just wanna address two of the things you said too, you know, the role of the board. That's actually a great question. Really what our position is, is approving a budget. And so, um, we really, we're not in the minutia of the school, you know, how they, um, who they hire, and, you know, the actual running of the school, that is, we defer to Kate, um, and she does an excellent job of that. And so, we are really just budget, and then, um, she works within that budget. So, that's a great question. And then, I think just to answer your question about the police detail, the police do come here, you know, you've probably seen them in the parking lot and all of that. These are kind of extra details that, that some of the parents had indicated they were looking for. So, it's really extra, where sometimes we pull, maybe we might pull a police officer from another town. It's something that they're doing extra.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, I have two questions on the budget?
That'd be great. Um, that'd be great.
Yeah. Molly, on page two, uh, I think I know what the answer to this is, but I'm not sure. It says tuition, uh, private, New Hampshire. What is that, please?
So, Kate, I don't know if you wanna explain that one.
It's students that go out of district.
I, I thought, I thought that's what it was, okay. And then the other thing is, uh, does, does, aside from the steps, uh, because of longevity and, and I think there are steps if, uh, a, a teacher achieves, achieves a higher education level themselves, right?
Yeah.
Those are tracks.
Yeah, tracks, okay. Aside from that, does the collective bargaining give, um, the, the teachers an annual increase for inflation or?
There's a COLA.
I'm sorry?
There's a COLA, so.
Cost of living.
Yep, so, um, if you look at the collective bargaining, they're all published online, you'll see there's a different salary grid for every year. So, if it's a three-year contract, you're gonna see three salary grids, and each one is adjusted for the cost of living or COLA.
Okay.
That is agreed upon.
When, when's the next collective bargain?
Yeah, well, and, and it, when I say the COLA, it's the COLA agreed upon at negotiations. It's not the COLA that's, like, published.
Yeah.
It's, it's one percentage for everybody?
Oh, I'd, I'd have to check, but.
One point five percent.
I think Dr. Andruski said it's one point five percent.
One point five, thank you.
And when I say COLA, I mean the COLA agreed upon in negotiations, not the COLA published by the Department of Labor.
When's the next collective bargaining bargain?
We'll start bargaining next year. This current contract for the teachers ends in 2026.
Ends, like, the first of 26?
Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So, it will run through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and then we'll have another contract negotiated for the start of July first.
When does, when does that negotiation?
Next year.
I, I know, I'm sorry. I, next, what, when next?
It all determines when we start working with the unions. Sometimes we start as early as August. We might try because of the number, we have about thirteen different contracts that we, we deal with throughout all of the SAU. So, Ms. Murray, our Director of Human Resources, does all of those negotiations.
But it's mid-year, it's not January, it's not.
It could be as, as early as next, the spring coming up. So, we're gonna, we'll meet with the union, start to talk with them, we'll set up a timeline. But typically, it would be, uh, August is the beginning, and then September, October, so that we can get it ready for your budget, so you know the, the tax impact, because it has to go as a warrant.
That helps a lot, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, before we let you guys go, anything else you would wanna ask?
Oh, yes, plenty of stuff to talk about. I mean, um, okay, so that, so the tuition, so the, uh, tuition private is the, uh, special needs, uh, I guess we must have.
Special, the special education.
Special education.
Yeah.
I guess, Pat, it does seem like these are amplifying. Can you just bring it a little closer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so does that tie to the, when you go to transportation, does it also tie to the increase in the, uh, significant increase in the transportation of, I see, transportation?
Yes.
A hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes.
So, how come it goes up that much? Can someone explain that to me?
Depending on where a student goes, right? You try to.
Well, help me out, help me out. Where, where, how far can they, do they, how far away can they go?
Um, it can be twenty minutes away, it can be an hour away. It depends. There are very few out-of-district placements that have openings right now, and so the, the distance or the radius that we sometimes have to travel from here is significant to find a place for a student to receive the services that they're entitled to.
Right, right, okay. So, you, you, you have your projection of how many, what, what special?
It's currently based on actuals.
Based on actuals?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, okay, and let me go back to the, uh, page, the first page. We were talking about retirements on, uh, provision for, for retirement sick, sick accruals. Um, last year, we budgeted sixty-four thousand, this year, we're budgeting a hundred and ten thousand. I could have sworn last year, we said we had three people retiring too. We had a sixty-four thousand dollar budget. And I know you don't know how many people are retiring or, either retiring or just leaving. Um, I mean, how did we get to the one-ten?
Pat, we always look at who is nearing retirement and who has talked about it, but we never have any guarantees, and that's not just for teachers, that's retirement for a variety of different positions. And so, it's not, and, and the amount each person gets varies by their position, by how long they've been here, and so it's really hard for us. It is, it is a best estimate from what we know, but it is not a guarantee.
Right.
For obvious reasons.
Right, so, is this just for the teachers, this line?
No.
That's everybody, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Um, so, the reason I'm gonna ask a few more questions is that if we're gonna, if we're gonna get together and, and discuss this, we're gonna have a million questions as we look at it. Maybe it's better that we, I mean, I have some right now, I just wanna try to find the big ones.
Heidi, Heidi, can you email me?
Yeah, please.
One of the things that we have done in the past is the FAC has had a series of questions, and they've given them to Heidi, and then Heidi has communicated to me, and then I've responded and get you the information, because sometimes you leave and you're like, oh, I wish I had asked, or something like that.
Okay, so, okay.
It does provide a nice line of communication, so that all of you get the same information in the same way. We have done that in the past. I don't know if the board would want to do something like that, but that is a practice we've done in my time here.
Yeah.
So, right, I kinda thought we were gonna do that tonight, but I guess probably better that we get together and, and.
You can do both.
Yeah, you can do both. I wasn't trying to limit tonight, I was just offering that as a possible next step.
Well, um, can, um, by the way, can, um, I'm, I'm jumping around here now. On the front, we had the fifty-five thousand dollar reduction of, of furniture and fixtures. Um, Molly, can you maybe offline tell us which line items you got that from?
So, that, that was a variety of line items, and it was actually identified by a board member who's not here today.
Yes, at the last meeting.
Um, and so, I would have to go back through.
Yeah, please, not now.
The line items.
Yep. Okay.
I'll, I'll do that.
Um.
Oh, oh, you're gonna do now?
No. There's a variety of line items, Pat. We would, we could, that could be a question, and we could identify for you.
Yeah.
Can't do it right now.
I tried to work backwards and figure it out.
And I think that's a great suggestion that Kate made, is if there's questions, it would be a lot easier for us to get all the questions, be able to provide you, uh, ample time to get those answers back, so that the whole FAC has the same questions and gets the same information. Because Pat did email us on Monday afternoon to get some, uh, questions for tonight's meeting, which was very helpful.
Right.
Um, so I would make that, that recommendation, that we can provide it to you in one document, so you see all the questions to help make your, your recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I guess the other big number is the, uh, health insurance, and I know everybody's hit with this. Um, but again, to me, it's a longer-term issue, and I, I know, I know during contract negotiation, this comes up, um, in terms of, you know, at some point, you know, you know, you gotta, you gotta look at the plan and all that, but right now, this is the wrong time to ask that question. I understand that. Uh, but it, it just went up ten percent again. Um, and, you know, it'd be interesting to see what kind of plans we're talking about that they have. Um, but, uh, I'll just leave it at that. But that, that's a big, that's a big number, again, one of those that we can't touch.
And just so you know about the health insurance. So, we use Health Trust, and it's a, it's a pooled program. And so, every year, we used to get what was called the GMR, Guaranteed Maximum Rate. This year, they did away with that. Now, they give us the rate. And so, it did vary per plan. So, if you look back a few years, our health insurance increases were actually zero during COVID. And so, what happens is, they base their annual increases based off of usage. And so, what they were finding in the past few years is that post-COVID, a lot of people are going to the doctor, and when they're going, they're going with a stage four cancer, because they didn't get to go when COVID was active. And so, we're seeing those higher increases now, because people are going to the doctors and people are using the plans. And so, it's great when people go, but at the same time, when people go and the usage goes up, so does the percentage increase the following years. So, if you look back at the COVID days, you're gonna see the increases, I believe it was zero one year, and now it's catching up post-COVID. So, that is part of the reason why you're seeing those increases.
But that's also part of your collective bargaining, right?
So, it is part of the collective bargaining on the percentage contribution to the health insurance now, and, and the plans offered.
And the plans offered.
Correct. So, we would have to go through the negotiation when we wanna change the plans, and also the contribution rates towards the plans.
Understood.
And then, health insurance provides us the annual, uh, cost every year.
The other thing we haven't talked about tonight is, is revenues, and there, there are revenues. Um, I know, Molly, I'd ask you.
Sure. And I just wanna remind everyone, as we're talking about budgets and the appropriation of the budgets that's done in the March vote, that is only the expense side of the House, that you're voting on that night. And so revenues are such things as food service sales, and there's three parts. It's what parents pay, what the state parts, and what, what state pays and the federal government pays. Then we have other sources of revenue, like special education aid, which has been steadily decreasing, and also different types of aid that we might receive, or things when we rent out the building, we get local revenue from renting out the gym, stuff like that. Any difference between the expenses voted in the spring and the small amount of revenue that we receive, and the small amount of adequacy we receive per student, that has to be raised in your tax rate. So what happens is, we vote on the budget in the spring, and then the revenues are set in the fall based of our projections, and that delta is what is raised in your November tax rate. And so when we're talking about the budget in the March meeting, there's, that is not part, the revenue is not part of it at that point in time. Yes, the revenue will impact eventually how much has to be raised in taxation, but what goes on the warrant is only the expense side. And so you have to appropriate all expenses that you believe you're going to spend, whether you have revenue to offset it or not. So for example, special education aid, you get aid if you have a certain amount of students that qualify for it. You still have to spend the money to, to educate and provide the services for the children, and then you would get the revenue to offset it the following year. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. So when we start talking about revenue, revenue is not an opportunity to decrease the budget, it's an opportunity to decrease your tax rate.
I know, that's why I ask it.
I know, and that's why I want everyone out to know.
We can't think-
Thank you, Molly.
We can't think about taxes unless we know the, both pieces.
Correct, correct.
And, you know, for instance-
But we're not here to set the tax rate.
But in my mind, that's what people, people, the question people out there want to know is, what's the impact on the tax rate? But, you know, I, I see one, one red flag flying already, and I don't know, again, I reached out to Molly, and she sent me this summary that says, because the big, the big money we get from the state is the grants, and it looks like it's $2,296,054.
Are you talking about adequacy?
Yeah. You sent me the, the summary, and this says for stratum. But last year was, we, in the MS-26, there was a line, less amount for state education tax and grant. There was $2,345 million.
So the MS-26 is just a projection, it is not used for any tax rate setting purposes.
But that eventually turns into this line, right?
No. So what happens is, on the MS-26, that is just mainly for budgetary purposes, to publish your budget, and what we typically do is take the revenues that were planned from the prior year, because at that time, we don't know how they're going to change, so we just usually carry them forward. But the purpose of the MS-26 is to post your budget, so people attending your annual meeting know what the budget is going in. There is no, that, that revenues on the MS-26 has zero impact. The, the revenues are set on the MS-24, which I sent you earlier today. And so the MS-24R is approved by the Department of Revenue, and that is what your official tax rate is set on. Your tax rate is not set on the MS-26.
So you sent me the towns, Townsplits on Cooperatives report. So is it 2.2, the concern is that it looks like what we're going to get from state aid drops about $49,000.
So I believe I also sent you the projected aid for 2020, 2000, yeah, '26.
Yeah, that's why I-
Yep, so yeah, it's probably decreasing, that would be a decrease in-
Right, that's something we gotta, I mean, I think everybody's got to be aware of that.
Yep, and that's a, and I would highly suggest everyone express that to their state representatives.
We're very aware of that.
It used to be a bit of that myself, but I can't do more. So, okay.
No, adequacy.
So, one other question, and then I'll stop. So for '23, '24, we had a surplus, correct?
Are you talking about unexpendited appropriation?
Yes.
Yeah?
And, and I think it was an amount of around, because I've been coming to these meetings, around $700,000, if I recall, but then the board approves spending some of that money on certain things, like the new door, door handles and things like that, if I recall. Is, is there anything, how does, how does the surplus get handled? If there's one at the end of a year?
So I, so I sent that out to you in an email earlier today, but I'll recap it for the board.
Again, I got that like an hour before I came, so.
Okay, sure. So what happens is, you have your annual budget, so in the '23, '24 year, we had a budget, and then you have your actuals on how you spend against it. And so the expenditures less than plan was $384,171, or 2.6%. That's a small amount of money that we didn't spend. Then we got revenues more than planned, which was $163,483. So your expenditures less than plan and your revenue more than plan, add those together to get your unassigned fund balance, which was $547,654. Now, the first 40 went to the trust funds. So on the MS-24, which is the official document that sets your tax rate, that I sent you earlier today, you're going to see the offsetting to the tax rate of $507,654. And that, what happens is, to support the current year budget, you then have to raise that amount less in taxation. So there's never a carryover from year to year, you just raise that much less the next year. So essentially, we have that in the bank, so we don't need the additional money.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yep.
So you're telling, it's important to know.
Sure.
You said we have 500, what was the number again, five?
So it's $507,654. However, 163 of that was revenue, unanticipated revenue. You cannot spend unanticipated revenue. You cannot overexpend your appropriation unless you have a public hearing to accept the unanticipated revenue. And some unanticipated revenue, you cannot have a public hearing to accept and expend. So the more important number would be the expenses less than plan, which would be your $384,000, which is only 2.6% of the budget, which I would say was a very good number.
Yeah, but, but that, that helps, doesn't it?
It helps you.
It helps, it helps reduce the tax rate.
It does help reduce the tax rate, yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at, then. So that's why, ultimately, it's important to see what the ins and the outs of the tax rate. It looks like we lose about, let's call it $50,000 from less state aid, but we have this $300,000 number out there that will be coming in to offset what we need to raise in taxes, is the way I like to say it.
So it did in November already?
It did in November.
That was all part of your November tax rate?
Oh, it did?
Correct.
Okay. So how are we looking for this year? In terms of, are we going to, are we going to end with a surplus?
If I had a crystal ball, I would love that, but at this point in time, I mean, we're still early in the year, we still have over half the school year to go, and students' needs change throughout the year. Now, in every school board meeting, we do encumber for the full year to the best of our ability, but every, every month, students' needs change. Every month, we have a different level of substitutes that we need. We have, we have changing needs within the building.
Yeah.
Every month, we look at things, like, for example, right now, I have snow plowing encumbered. Right now, I don't know if it's going to snow or not. If I knew, I would play the futures market. And so at this point in time, I can't give you a solid figure.
That's from our November meeting.
So in the November meeting, what we were projecting is 800, 183,000. 966 is an unassigned fund balance. Now, a small part of it, I think, is revenue, unless, I don't know, there might not be any revenue. But at this point in time, that number would not be a promise.
Right. Okay, I got, I do have another question. I hate to do this to you guys. So we have three funds out there. We have the Special Education Fund, we have the Building Repair Maintenance Fund, and the New Technology Fund. And, and it looks like the Special Education Fund has $516,000 in it.
Correct.
So, given that, given that we basically doubled, looks like we're going to double next year what we budgeted for, could that, some of that be used to offset that, or is that for a true emergency?
I would-
In terms of, like, four more families moving in with-
That would, I would, I mean, I can let the board answer, but I would anticipate that as for unexpendited, or unanticipated expenditures, because that would not even cover two students that move into district, potentially.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you say that again? I didn't hear you.
So trust funds, we would like to try for unanticipated expenditures, so if you had-
I just didn't hear, yeah, I just didn't hear the last statement you made. That wouldn't even what?
Cover two students. So if two students moved in with significant needs, that trust fund would not be sufficient.
Because it includes transportation, you should-
Yeah, and that would need, that would need to cover all the needs of the student.
Right, okay. All right.
Thank you.
And then it's up to the board to determine how much, because this is all part, there's the operating budget, but then there's monies that we put into these three funds.
If you so choose to.
If they so choose to. So that's, the board still hasn't decided what they want to do with that.
Correct. And that could either be from fund balance or a raise in appropriate.
Okay. But if they do put it in, that, that's going to impact the tax rate, because that, that effect is expense, correct?
Correct.
Depending on how it's raised.
Correct. So if it's, if it's, if it's from fund balance, it still impacts the tax rate, because it would go to the trust fund rather than being returned in the tax rate. If it's a raise in appropriate, then it is raise in appropriate in the tax rate.
Got it, okay, thank you. All right. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you guys so much. So do you, Heidi, does it make sense for you guys to maybe head into the tent and take 20 minutes, or, what makes sense?
Um, I, it's a little early in the process, I think, for us, because I think we're still gelling around what questions we might have individually, but if I look at this schedule, I would say maybe the, the second to last meeting would be when we would meet and come out with any final recommendations. And I think that's January, right? Mid-January? And then there would be one final meeting that you guys have.
Okay.
So we would meet before that, I would-
Yeah, I'm just thinking about timing, right? If it-
So Heidi, what are you saying?
Kate would have to work.
Heidi, do you want to get all four of us together at some point? Is that what you're saying?
Well, Jennifer was just asking if we wanted to split off now to talk-
Well, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to really study that.
Yeah, that's what she just said.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
So we could certainly meet offline, if, if the group wanted to do that, or just maybe meet before the next meeting, if people wanted to come in for that, we could also do that.
Now, are we supposed to be here on the 18th, next week as well, to discuss this?
I think so.
That's correct, yeah. We will see you on, we have you scheduled for the 18th, and also, January 15th would be your last meeting to finalize any recommendations to this board.
Do you want to meet before the 18th meeting?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yep, so the way we had it scheduled out is that, and this was off of last year, and last year, we called one special meeting because of recommendations, but the schedule we have is, today would be the first meeting, next Wednesday would be the second meeting. That is also a school board meeting, so we'll conduct all full school board business at that meeting, but we'll hear other recommendations or questions you may have next Wednesday, and then January 15th is our finalization with the FAC about the budget. So that would be where you would give us final recommendations of what you're asking. That happened last year, and we called the meeting directly after that, to go through